Those requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Independent and the Two River Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Menaceville Building and filing with the Township Clerk on July 7, 2022. Miniman Clark. Miniman Kratz.
Here.
Miniman Sedembrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have certificates of appreciation and proclamations. Our first presentation is recognizing Middletown Fire Department Company Number One, volunteer Thomas P. Somerville, for 50 years of service. At this time, I'd like to invite Thomas Somerville. Please come forward with Fire Chief Fred Gorsinger to the front of the room.
Well, good evening, everybody. First of all, welcome to our July. You got one of these keys, too, don't you? It's really one of those things that fills you up with pride because oftentimes we get to talk about, and both the chiefs that are up here have heard me say it probably one too many times, right, Bernard? Okay. But to talk about the incredible sense of community that our fire department and our first responders have as volunteers, especially of our fire department, one that is rooted in such an institution in Middletown, and given the fact that there's former chiefs here in the audience, two former chiefs up on this dais, and just the respect and love that is exhibited by individuals who day in and day out have provided so much to our township. And Tom, it's been, I don't know how many years you and I have known each other and crossed paths, but it's always one of absolute admiration from my part because I know from others, the dedication and your willingness to be that leader, somebody who has dedicated 50 years of service to Middletown Township. You know, the last time I gave one of these keys out, somebody was a little bit upset because they said, "You weren't born when I volunteered, when I first started volunteering for the fire department." But I wasn't going to bring it up, Tom, I promise. But you look at our township, and you look at the fact that Middletown continues to be a safe place because of individuals like Tom Somerville, and I couldn't be more proud that here in this building, and today, with your family, your friends, and our community watching, to celebrate your 50 years of dedication to the Middletown Township Fire Department. Tom, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm worried that I was picking up the wrong thing. But very quickly, I just want to talk about a few of Tom's achievements. So Thomas P. Somerville became a member of the Middletown Township Fire Company Number One in July of 1972, and rose through the ranks first serving as an engineer, lieutenant, and captain, and has been awarded multiple lifesaving awards through both his fire company and first aid. He currently serves as fire company engineer, ensuring that our vehicles are ready, at ready state to respond at any moment, and is the trustee of that organization. Tom has also held top responder for multiple years, to include the past five years. He's a fire instructor at the original Fire Academy Board of Directors when the Fire Academy was created, and he has served as a Fire Academy Director for 23 years, most of those years serving as safety director. An instrumental in our firefighter program, which has served as a model with few other county fire academies for the state to adopt the firefighter program throughout the state of New Jersey. He's also proposed a push for the Division of Fire Safety to fund the training materials for the state fire training programs previously funded by the township. He's been a founding member of our field comm unit, which I think we got a couple surprises for you. Currently serving as captain of that unit, he has been operating field coms for 30 years. In 1995, he was involved with the design of the current field unit to replace a retired ambulance previously used. Tom is a founding member of the fire department's special services unit, and continues to serve in that capacity, holding multiple positions of lieutenant and captain. He's trained for and responded to many confined space hazardous material, trench collapses, structural collapses, rope rescues in Middletown and in the surrounding areas, and he was a founding member of the public information unit of the fire department, for which many years preceded the current appointee from the fire chief. On behalf of the township committee, I want to present you with this certificate of 50 years of dedicated service to Middletown and to your fire department, a fire department that we couldn't be more proud that you've been a part of, and have been able to train, keep safe, and show the dedication that exists in this township to the fire department. And this key is presented to Thomas P. Somerville, in grateful appreciation of 50 years of service to the Middletown Township Fire Department with Middletown Fire Company Number One, given on the 18th day of July in 2022. Tom, well deserved. Congratulations.
Perfect. Thank you.
Bernard, give it up in line. Chief. Rick Ryan. Rick. All right, let's give it up for Tom. You're catching up. They usually know what's going.
I will only probably ask another, what, three years?
The next presentation tonight is recognizing Middletown High School North Boys Track and Field Team for winning state sectional championship. So I'd like to invite the entire team, coaches and athletes, please come forward and join.
Yes, thanks, Ryan. So after the meeting, Miniman Clark is racing these guys. Tickets are $20. Don't let the size deceive you, I'm late. But another day, another township committee meeting, and another state championship team here at Town Hall, representing High School North. Guys, congratulations. I know that, you know, it's tough getting everybody together in the summertime, but we're very happy to have you guys here to represent your school, represent your team. And to be, now hold this title is, how many of you are seniors? None of you? You're taking it again next year. That's what I love here in that. But to now hold the Central Jersey Group Three sectional state championship is a testament, not just to the dedication that you have towards this sport, but a dedication that you have toward yourselves as individuals, and also a promise that you're making to all the people holding up the cameras right now, right? Because what they're saying, she wanted to be included in that. Because this isn't just a championship for High School North. It's a demonstration and a result of all the work that you have put in, but all the dedication that your parents have had. And oftentimes, I think that parents get slightly overlooked, giving a lot of credit, for the work that you do day in and day out, raising young men and women like these five individuals right here to become champions and to have the mindset of a champion. And now, the pressure's on, because none of you are seniors.
Right.
But, so on behalf of the township committee, we want to congratulate all of you. We want you to extend that congratulations to the rest of your teammates as you get prepared. Coach, congratulations to you and to the entire coaching crew. But today, we have certificates for you from the township committee congratulating the Middletown High School North Boys Track and Field Team on winning the 2022 NJ SIAA Central Jersey Group Three State Sectional Championship. I tell them every time that you guys mean something, that they have to start reducing that down. That is insane. Say that every time. The passion and commitment you've displayed, both as individual athletes and as part of a team, will help you preserve and persevere and overcome any hurdles that stand in your way on life's path, and we encourage you to stay focused and driven as you always chase your dreams. They love to throw that pun in there at the end for me, chasing your dreams. Good job, first and wherever you are. But congratulations, guys. It's really great to have so many athletes from your school, so many athletes that are demonstrating the perfection and the drive that they're going for in each and everything that they do. So on behalf of the township committee, congratulations, keep it up, and I'm looking forward to seeing you back next year. Hopefully, none of you are seniors then either, but we want to keep this ball rolling and keep bringing that trophy back. So congratulations, all right? And, you know, one of these guys, I'm not going to say who, continually beats everyone else in the Mayor's 5K Challenge. See you there, Michael. I love it. All right, promo pride, there you go, boys. All right, guys, congratulations.
... will be moved to the agenda. At this time, we have a proclamation for the record, a proclamation recognizing August 2nd, 2022 as National Night Out in the Township of Middletown. Our next item, we have approval of minutes for June 20, 2022, regular meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have a public hearing, a proposed ordinance, 2022-3348, an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Jefferson Way within the Township of Middletown, Monmouth County, New Jersey.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3348. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance for introduction, 2022-3349, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $1,750,000 for various capital improvements by and for the Township of Middletown and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing issuance of $650,750 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading, with a public hearing to be held August 15, 2022. At this time, we have an ordinance for introduction, 2022-3350, an ordinance amending management salaries for 2022.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading, with a public hearing to be held August 15, 2022. At this time, we have a presentation by the Middletown Public Library of the Joyce P. Murphy Children's Garden. This time, I'd like to invite Heather Andelson to please come forward, library director.
Give it a little bit. Good evening. My name is Heather. My name is Heather Andelson. Thank you for having me. I am the director of the public library, and it is my pleasure to introduce a new garden we'll be building at the library. The garden is proposed to be on the front of the building. Currently, we have just some trees there now, but last year, the library lost a valued staff member, Joyce P. Murphy, and her family has donated funds for us to start a children's garden in her memory. So I wanted to kind of present to you the project. We went out and looked at many different landscape designs, and we settled on Terracasa LLC, and I'm just going to go to the second page, the project, the children's garden. So this is going to be a children's space that is going to be right off the portico in front of the library. It's going to have a sensory garden for the kids, so it's going to have like herbs that they can smell, beautiful flowers that they can see. We're going to hold programs out there for children and for adults. So I just wanted to give you kind of a sense of what's happening in the garden. Everything in the garden will be safe. It's on native plants. It's all, you know, there's nothing that can hurt anyone in the garden, of course. We researched that thoroughly with the landscaper and with the Department of Works as well. We've been in contact with the Department of Works on this project. So the garden vision is, the next one, thank you. Planning a layout, we have a water feature that's going to be a service attribute in the garden. We're going to have inviting seating. We're going to have some interesting pavers, which I'm going to show you. We're going to have lighting, and we're going to have like a place where people just use to go and reflect. So the next page is the garden layout, and what you see there on the left-hand side where it says gate, that is where the current entrance to the library is. So that's going to be right off the portico, and it's going to be a little kind of gate going into the garden. What you see there now, right after the section gate in the left-hand corner there, that's where our small water feature will be. It will be, it's going to be made out of metal, it's going to be filtered, it's going to be a very nice memorance garden. We're also going to have, all those brown and kind of light brown places are, it's going to be our paving area, but I want to show you what we're doing with that. We're not doing traditional pavers. We want to keep it soft and fun for the kids. So if we go to the next page, that's the list, yeah, that's perfect. That's some of the ideas of what the flower is going to look like, so they don't look natural, native to the area, easy to care for. And if you go to the next page, that's the water feature. Again, this is, it's only going to be a few inches of water. The garden's going to be completely closed in with a gate, so no one will be able to be there on their own, and we will put up signs that, you know, people have to be in a certain age to be in the garden without people being in the, without having parents there. And then the next page is called Take a Seat. We're going to build a U-shaped seating arrangement, so right now, there's currently just some hedges there, so those hedges are going to come out, and we're going to build this brick kind of U-seat shape. So when we have programming, it's going to be multi-story actually, and you'll see in the next picture. So there'll be a top area for the parents to sit, and a little lower area for the kids to sit. This is just an idea of what it's going to look like. So if you go to the next page, you'll get a better sense of what we're talking about. Yes, thank you. So the U-shaped, that's what I'm talking about, the blue stones, the larger ones will be like where the parent sits. The lower ones are actually going to be where the kids sit for the storytime, so they're not sitting directly on the ground. We're going to have plants in that, on the border there, and then you'll see we have some wood rounds starting the pathway. So we're going to be using trees from Middletown to recycle tree trunks, and they're going to be cut down to all the same size, and we're going to lay those down as our pavers instead of traditional pavers. Gives it kind of a whimsy kind of feel. We'll be able to keep it very smooth, we'll be able to change out any as needed, we'll be putting some gravel in between them, it is ADA compliant. Go to the next page, you'll see again what we're thinking about for some of those tree trunk areas. Joyce's family is very interested in helping out as much as they can with this project, so they've offered to do all the shellacking, they've offered to place them all down, they want to help with the building. So that's kind of what we're thinking about for those wood pavers. And if you go to the next one, yeah, that one, so that's kind of what the stone wall's going to look like, the seating area we're talking about. The white space will be where the plants would be on top. It's going to be called the Joyce P. Murphy Children's Garden, which will be put across the back. It's going to match the library feel, it's going to be like the same kind of brick color, so that's going to match the library exterior. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that's the, one back, please, thank you. That's the outline of the garden. There's currently a very big tree in the front of the yard there, and that was planted 50 years ago, and we love that tree, so that's going to become part of our garden as well. It's kind of become like a little fairy garden, we're going to put little fairies out there for the kids. But that tree is going to kind of be the border of the garden, so the whole garden will be surrounded either by a gate, the brick piece, or some natural border with some plants and that tree, so it's all going to be contained there. It was important to us because if we want to have programs out there, we don't want the kids running towards the parking lot, so they can all be contained in one area. We've had lots of programs out there since COVID, just with a tent, and people absolutely love it, so I think it's going to be a big place for the kids to really sit and like it a lot, and it's going to be good for adults to be able to sit out there as well. So if you go to the next page, we talked about how this is being funded by donations completely, some of it from Joyce P. Murphy's family, and some of it from a donation account that we have at the library, but we also wanted to give the community a chance to add their own flair to it. So instead of doing memorial bricks like other people do for projects, we wanted to keep it whimsical. So we are in touch with people who might be able to make us like metal butterflies, so people would be able to buy butterflies in memory of someone or in honor of a child, and they'll be going up like some kind of structure, so the butterflies would be beautiful, different colors with people's names on it, so we could raise additional funds that way, but it would be a lifelong thing for the kids to come back and see their names on the butterfly, if they like to do that. So that's kind of the garden. We hope that you like the idea. We've been working on it for quite some time, we've had many committee meetings on this at the library. The library board is looking to hopefully pass it this weekend with your blessing, Wednesday's our meeting, of course. So we think this is exactly where we want to go, it leaves us a place to expand later on, so we're also going to reuse whatever plants or flowers we can, and I think it's going to really spruce up the front yard, and I think it's an exciting project. So can I answer any questions on that?
So when you're looking at the library, first of all, very nice presentation, thank you. When you're looking at the library, you're talking about on the left-hand side of facing the entrance?
The right.
On the right hand, so over where the 100-year planting was?
Yeah, that has since come out, we've removed those, that was just a temporary thing, but yeah, that's what, we're going to reuse that whole area.
Over to that big tree that kind of comes out.
Yes, and we also have the time capsule that, you know, we were waiting for the garden to put it in, so the time capsule will go in that garden, near the tree probably, so we can market for 50 years, so it will be planted in a garden as well.
Okay. Any questions for Heather?
Thank you for the presentation, it was a great presentation. There's no fish in the water.
There is not. We've looked.
Are you now opposed to it because they're, okay.
We've looked at the safety, we've made sure that the water's going to be very, not too high, it's going to be very clean, we can, you know, we'll keep an eye on that. Obviously, we want to rise in the winter, so that's going to be kind of like a, just a way for people to go and reflect there. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions for Heather? All right, Heather, thank you very much. Great job. All right. Heidi, consent agenda.
I did want to point out that I forgot to put an item on the consent agenda that was distributed earlier in the week, so I want to add Resolution 22-202, and I'm going to renumber the two license applications. So that Resolution 22-202 is a resolution authorizing the purchase by the Township of Middletown of property located at Block 795, Lot 11.04, commonly known as 154 Ironwood Court, for the purpose of preserving it as an affordable housing unit. So that will be added to the consent agenda.
Heidi, just for clarification here, 22-202 is an ABC.
Yes. So item 26 will now be 204, and actually, 27 will remain 203.
Okay.
Just for logical sense in the minute.
Yeah.
I apologize for the confusion. So at this time, I'd like to ask the township committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include 22-187 through 22-202, including bingo and raffle applications.
Motion to approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have the township committee acting as the ABC issuing authority. We have Resolution 22-203, a resolution authorizing place-to-place transfer for liquor license transfer, plenary retail distribution license, 1331. transfer for liquor license transfer, plenary retail distribution license, 1331-44-043, Middletown Bottle King, Inc.
Motion to approve, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 22-203. At this time, we have 22-204, resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses with special rulings for the 2022-2023 licensing term.
Motion to approve, second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 22-204. This time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right, uh, Committeewoman Kratz?
Um, sure, I just wanted to offer my congratulations to, uh, Mr. Somerville for 50 years of services, is absolutely to be commended and, and so impressive, but a testament to our community for sure, and to our, also to the boys', um, track and field team for winning their big championship. Also, lots coming out of Middletown North these days, so that's wonderful, and, um, looking forward to seeing the garden, and I know that it's been a lot of work that has gone into that at the library, so it's, it's going to be really quite beautiful, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, Committeeman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to echo Committeewoman Kratz's, uh, congratulations for Tom, I've known him for the entirety of my 26 years in the fire department, and, he's always been a, um, he's always been very, very involved, you know, he's, he, he wasn't a peripheral member, um, he, he's done the hard work, he continues to do the hard work, and, uh, again, I've only done 26 years, the guy's done two times, and it's, uh, that's pretty darn impressive. Um, to the North Track Team, uh, fantastic job, and, uh, I'm not gonna take all, all the thunder, Mayor, but I just wanna touch on something real quick, this past Saturday, not only the township, but, uh, across the nation, uh, we launched 988, which is, uh, a counselor's hotline for, uh, mental health and, um, crisis intervention, it's a hotline that's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and, uh, you never know who needs it, and, uh, it's, uh, it's important, so pass the word along and make sure that your friends and your family know that there's always somebody to talk to. Thank you.
Thank you, Committeeman Clark, Committeeman Sedambreno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wanna echo my colleague's comments with regard to Tom Somerville and his 50 years of service, just, uh, very impressive, and very, very few attain, uh, such a record of service. I do wanna bring, uh, to your attention, Mayor, and to the public's attention, one comment that you made with regard to the high school Newark Boys Track and Field. And you, and you said something that I, that I tell my kids a lot, and I tell my kids, uh, action, actions matter more than words, and tonight, the mayor said, he said, another day, another Township Committee meeting, another championship. And this is the case where, um, the words are after the action, so, um, it's great to be a member of the Township Committee and great to represent Middletown, and this is so true, and we find this after, uh, one Township Committee meeting after another, that we have great representation, young and old, uh, by this township. That's all I have for this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, quickly, I gotta touch on, uh, Tom Somerville, uh, just a, just an amazing guy, he's, uh, he's the guy that I would always say, uh, he's the guy on the top shelf of the toolbox, if he needed anything at the fire scene, he knows everything about everything. I'll look at my dad when I say this, he does talk a lot, but he is the guy, he knows, uh, he knows everything, so, uh, congratulations to him, 50 years.
Tom talks a lot, or your dad talks?
No, not my dad, I just want a clarification.
All right, all right.
Uh, just a, a great, a great accomplishment, I'm sure he's still a high call goer, uh, still to this day. Uh, I do wanna bring up, uh, I went to an Eagle, uh, Eagle Scout Ceremony a couple weeks back, um, Dominic Con, um, just an amazing, uh, family, so there was, uh, six members of, uh, of his family that achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, I, I haven't seen anything like that, um, and I just was, was so impressed with the family. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, um, I, I won't reiterate, uh, all of my colleague's comments, but, um, obviously, um, I, I cannot stress, uh, the importance, um, as Committeeman Clark mentioned, of the new 988 system. If you or somebody you love, um, is, is experiencing, um, thoughts in which, in which you, you just, you don't understand, please do not hesitate for a second to dial that number, um, it is critically important. And you, you, you don't realize the impact that you can have on an individual until sometimes it's too late, and I know that there are people out there each and every day who are working to ensure that those who need assistance are there to get that assistance, and I think that 988 is an incredible resource, it should be known just as much as 911 is, and I'm sure one day it will be, but we have a duty as, as a governing body and as an entity, looking to ensure that our residents have all the resources that, that are possible to know that help is there, um, help will continue to be there, and if you are experiencing suicidal thoughts in any way, shape, or form, please, please, please do not hesitate to dial 988. It is just as much of an emergency as any other emergency. There will be individuals that we give keys to, not myself and not this governing body, but in 50 years, there will be individuals who have worked that 988 number that deserve that same key to this city because of the work that they do as, as a first responder. So please start, help spread the word that 911 is an emergency line, but so is 988, um, for anyone experiencing those suicidal thoughts. So, um, I wanna congratulate, um, the Hess family, um, from Charlie's at Linkcroft. Just last week, we cut the ribbon on the new Charlie's at the, the old Linkcroft Inn, um, a, an unbelievable business that is, I, I know will be pulling people from all over, I was fortunate enough to be there, but I wanna congratulate Mary Ann Hess, who's a resident of Middletown, uh, her family, um, and it was, it was very nice, uh, as soon as you walk in, uh, a, a legend in his own Larry Hess, who, who lost his life earlier this year, um, uh, and wasn't, unfortunately, sadly, wasn't able to see his, his last project open up, um, but a very beautiful tribute to him, um, a, a great accomplishment for the Hess family, uh, great to see his wife, Larry's wife and Larry's children, uh, at the grand opening, um, and I know that there'll be, uh, there'll be plenty of great memories, uh, on the site of, of a, of a restaurant and a gathering place that, that created great memories, um, so, uh, I wish them, uh, only the best. And then finally, I just wanna thank, um, Commissioner Director Tom Arnone and the entire Commissioner Board. Last week, they, uh, gave, I believe, upwards of almost 100 grants to nonprofits throughout Monmouth County, um, and Middletown was, two Middletown, um, institutions were the benefactor of, of that, uh, one being, uh, No Limits Cafe, received, uh, just over $115,000 from the county to continue doing the work that they do, uh, and the Middletown Arts Center received more than $350,000 to continue to provide great programming, to sustain the arts, and to sustain the, the, the mission, uh, of the Arts Center to grow and to thrive, uh, here in Middletown. So I wanna thank the Commissioners, I wanna thank, uh, everybody that, that worked to, to get those applications done, Maggie O'Brien, the Cartier family from, from No Limits, and just a, just a wonderful, uh, thing for, uh, our two, two great Middletown institutions to be able to receive funding for. With that being said, I'll now open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment can do so, uh, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, at four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining, we just ask that you state your name and address for the record. With that being said, as Joe moves the microphone over. Uh, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yeah, Tara.
Uh, Tara Fleming, 49, Brandi One Way. Thank you to the committee, uh, for serving the public. I have two questions, like unrelated to anything else that you were talking about, but I read in the, um, patch, and I got an update from Congressman Smith about the, some potential funding for Kings Highway, so that was great, uh, I was glad to read that. I just wanted to know about the, um, if you guys could contact New Jersey Transit about the train bridge, um.
The plywood?
Yeah, whatever's going on there, and what was there before, didn't really look that good either.
I was told, uh, last week that they're gonna be replacing, replacing both sides.
Okay.
Um, and I asked to be a part of the aesthetic conversation.
Great, great.
Whether or not my recommendations are, are followed, uh, I, I'm not certain, but we're having those conversations to ensure that it's not plywood anymore, because it looks terrible.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna go through all that, you know, stuff there, that would be, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great, that's great, um, the other question I had is on, on the, a microgrid, and, and any update on that?
So I was with, uh, just two weeks ago, I guess, maybe a little bit more than that, Captain Callahan from Naval Weapons Station was here, and we did discuss that. One sad thing to note, uh, sad for the Navy, sad for Middletown, is that Dennis Blazak, who was their Community Affairs Liaison, uh, has officially retired, fully, um, and the wealth of knowledge and the institution that he provided to not just the captains of, of that base, but to Middletown, um, there, there wasn't much that was happening at the federal government level, especially, um, at the, at the naval, uh, level, that it, that, um, Dennis wasn't, um, absolutely understanding of every little detail, um, and he really was a big proponent for the microgrid, um, but I assure you, it has not fallen off the radar, um, but unfortunately, just this past week, just on Friday, I received the letter from Captain Callahan, uh, Commander, uh, Callahan, that, uh, he had finally, he had found his new, um, designate, um, so those conversations can now, um, begin again, now that there is a, a point person from Naval Weapons Station, Earl.
Good, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, I, why, why wouldn't they cooperate though, because shouldn't that help them, I mean, at the end of the deck?
They're not too keen, they're, they're not as, you know, they're not too keen on energy being siphoned off from.
Oh, I didn't realize it would come from them, okay, thank you.
We have to find a happy median. Thanks, Tara. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public statements? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second. Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Mayor Perry. Yes.
She carries to adjourn.
See you all in August, hope you continue to enjoy the summer.